So we'll just let everyone find seats. Okay, and now we're ready. So the agenda is provided, and so the first item on the agenda is called to order, which I've just done to welcome everybody here and roll call. And I believe Vicki McDonald and Diane Lorenzen are not here?
And Heidi Kendall.
And Heidi Kendall. I thought Heidi was coming, so maybe she's coming late. But I did hear that they others had travel conflicts or family conflicts. And so number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. Sophie, can all stand and... Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And item number three is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Are there any requests from trustees to revise the agenda, to consider anything in a different order than has been indicated in the current agenda? Seeing no requests from around the table, then we'll go with the agenda as was set. So item number four is to approve the minutes. There are three sets of minutes. The first is the Board of Trustees' regular meeting from May 9th, 2017. That begin on page five. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by trustee Wakens, seconded by trustee Bragstad. Any corrections or anything? Seeing no corrections, then all those in favor of approving the regular meeting minutes from May 9th, 2017, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to the Board of Trustees' special meeting of May 9th, 2017, that begins on page 25. Is there a motion to approve those special meeting minutes? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Bragstad. Trustee Kendall is now arrived as well. All those in favor of approving the special meeting minutes from May 9th, please indicate by raising your hand. And I'll let Heidi sit down, but I think that's unanimous as to all trustees present now. And then we move on to the special meeting minutes from May 11th, 2017, when the new board members were seated. They begin on page 27. Is there a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from May 11th? Moved by trustee Wakens, seconded by trustee Decker. Any corrections or anything? Seeing none, then all those in favor of approving the special meeting minutes from May 11th, 2017, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And now we come to item number five, which is public comment. And we do have one note of written correspondence on page 31 in the packet. This is the time for any member of the public to come to the podium and bring to the board's attention any item that you think falls within the jurisdiction of the school district or something that you believe that the board should hear about. Because we follow the Open Meetings Act, we won't have a discussion about it because it hasn't been noticed up as an activity or an item that the board would be discussing. But if it warrants discussion, we can add it on as an agenda item at a later time and have a further discussion. So we'd love to hear from you on non-agenda items. And if anyone has any comments, then if you can spell your first and last name if they're unusual spell or an unusual name. And if you represent an organization, please identify the organization. And we try to have you keep comments to three minutes. And if you can, because we're recorded, if you can turn on the microphone. Any public comment? Now it's a long explanation for no public comment. And so moving on to six, which are reports and announcements. The first is announcements from superintendent thing.
Thank you, and I'll be brief this evening. The items are listed on page 32 in the packet. I would just simply, for the benefit of the public, call your attention to the fact that we are transitioning to summer hours effective this week. And what that means is administration building offices and the high school offices will be open 10 hours a day, Monday through Thursday, and those hours will be 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Our next regular board meeting will be Tuesday, June 27th, at 6:00 p.m. in this room. We will also observe Independence Day on July 4th, and all offices will be closed Tuesday, July 4th. We have our regular scheduled board meeting Tuesday, July 11th, at 6:00 p.m., also in this room. However, you'll note that we have listed as tentative the 2nd July meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, July 25th. And normally, we assess whether or not there is enough business to warrant a second meeting in July, and we'll make that call as early as possible so that you can make appropriate summer plans. Thank you.
And now we move on to 6B, which is announcements from trustees. Are there any announcements from any trustee? I have just one. I just want to say thanks to everyone who made the graduations this year successful. It was pretty glorious to participate in as many graduations as I could, and I thank all the other trustees who were able to be there, whether it was at Willard's graduation or Adult Ed's graduation or three Missoula Schools or Seeley Lake's graduation. It sounds like everything went off with almost not a hitch. And in that sense, I just really appreciate that we've been successful in making sure that students have a pathway to where they want to go to next. So thanks, if you can bring it back to the building level, I would really appreciate it. But thank you. Any other announcements from trustees? Then we move on to 7A1, which is Smart Schools 2020. And Mark, should I just turn it over to Burley?
Turn it over to Burley. So thanks. Tonight, we have CTA here to talk about Willard, and we have DSA here to talk a little bit about Washington Middle School. So on the agenda, it says that CTA's first. Is there an issue with us moving Washington up? All right. So Bill Grant from DSA is here, and I'm going to turn it over to him because you guys hear me talk all the time, so, Bill.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm William Grant. They call me Bill, and I work for Mike Dowling. Mike was unable to make it tonight to make this presentation, and he asked me to step in for him. We've been working on this school, I guess it's really since about November or December. And we've made visits to the school. We find the schools to be in excellent condition, with the exception of the things that were scheduled to be worked on. And this is a project about school expansion, and it's also a project about improving technology and improving the infrastructure of the school to last year into the future. So we've had a group of architects, ALSC architects, that have come over and have worked with the, an EIT group from the school, both in schematic documents and in design development documents. And we have really, we're finishing up the design document submittal at the end of this week. So we're really at a milestone here, and it's a very good timing for us to present to the school board regarding this school. Now, it's kind of a little far away from my eyes, but I'm going to try and figure out how to use this thing.
Well, I don't think that is going to enhance your slides. I'm going to scroll through it.
Okay.
There's a PDF format. It's on the school.
Okay, that's fine. This school, what we're looking at here, you know, I've noticed, I brought in this red pointer, and I usually forget to bring them in, but it just doesn't work on those new screens. And I know, you know, Burley has sent us notice that all of the screens in all of the classrooms are going to turn into this technology within a certain period of time. And I applaud that, but the teachers are going to have a hard time with their red buttons.
I can help, Bill, if you want to.
Well, okay, if you'd like to. So what we're looking at is a view, is a bird's eye view from, I guess it would be from the northeast, looking back at the school. And you can see where the, what we call the annex or what we call the 54 building is right in the middle, right? And over to the right is the 51, which was the original. That was the old gym, and then the classroom that's attached to it. It kind of goes off to the south. And then there's the 89, the 89 portion of it that fronts on Sussex on the backside and right. And then there's the, there's what we, what you call the new gym, which is right there. And then I'm going to go over the additions off, right off the bat, and talk about the site. One of the challenges was to serve lunches and to the children. Right now, it's being accomplished in what they call the old gym. And albeit it was of prime size, it also was doubling, it was sort of doubling up, and it's low in the ground, it's depressed. So I think one of the, one of the early decisions was to create a new gym, and that's what you see over the east side of the building. All right. The main entrance and the security of the children were also a big design point. And so over all the discussions, it had been decided to move the main entrance to the north, which is where it's being shown right now. The west entrance would essentially be abandoned, except for exiting from the building, if that makes any sense. So any drop-off was, is going to occur over on the west side and on the north side on Central Avenue for parents. And the bus, the buses will continue to drop off on, excuse me, the name of the street.
Sussex.
Yeah, Sussex. So that's kind of how the, how the site works. The children in the mornings and in the afternoons are going to be gathering outside in what was the, you know, it was the old courtyard on the outside, and it's a little bit, I guess it's a little bit east of, yeah, it's right in there. That's kind of where, where the majority of the kids would be. And we're going to maintain a parking lot out on the street. Now, this particular drawing does not show a buffer between the sidewalk and that parking lot. So we've actually moved it in about five feet in subsequent drawings, but this is essentially the site plan that we're using. We are, utility-wise, we are going to have to cut in a new water service for our fire sprinkler system, and the electrical service for the building is going to have to be upgraded. And because the transformers are in a location of the building that is, will be occupied by new school buildings, we're going to have to trench around the perimeter of the building. And some of that equipment is going to be located to the north of the old, old gym. So it's a complicated plan, and I think what the teachers were looking, the EIT group was looking to do was to make sure that they could, that the children could stay, stay on the inside of the building without having to walk outside. And we've accomplished that, I think, pretty well. And at the end is, you'll see, you'll see the floor plan that, and we can, and we can discuss that a little bit further. This plan is what it would look like going into the new main entrance. It's a, it's a fairly simple, we tried to make it inviting, we put some new materials on the outside of the building. You can go to the next slide. And then that's more of a straight-on look. So we've wrapped some new materials around the old gym, and this, this is apparent, this is really the parent drop-off area. This is where all the security happens in the building. We may not end up having some of those landscape walls out in front, but we're doing, we're doing the best we can with the budget available for the landscaping. You can go to the next one. This is just a little bit closer, going in the front. You can see, you know, we've tried to create some excitement there with some elevation, you know, a little bit higher building volumes and some color. You can go to the next. And then this view is the one that you would see if you were playing in the fields to the east of the building. This is what it's going to look like, and we've created in the center of the building a new commons area or what we call a multipurpose. And the old 1954 building, and you'll see the, the small structure on the right, that's that building. Behind those windows will be where the new kitchen is. That's where the kitchen will be located. So all the kids will eat behind those glass doors. You can go to the next, I think we get a little closer. Yeah, the kids will be eating behind there, and there's some new doors that lead directly out to the play areas. And once again, we've, on the, this is a view of that, you know, further back from, I guess it would be the northeast corner of the property. And you take a look, and the volumes are fairly straightforward. This building on the, you know, that we're looking at, on the left side, that is the new gym. We do, excuse me, we do have some natural lighting coming in from the east side. And we've also placed some logos in the center of those, of that, of each wall on the north and the south side, so that we can, so that when people are driving towards the building, they can identify it, especially driving down South Avenue. As you all know, Washington Middle School is the hardest school in the district to be able to see, to view. It's hidden behind trees, it's hidden behind, in a very residential district. And we try to put those, those logos, which is the school, it's the school logo, on, on the building to give it some identification. You can go to the next one. And then this is, this is the opposite side of the gym, what it will look like where the, where the bus traffic occurs. And so this slide is in the middle, we, we maintained the courtyard. We felt that the courtyard, well, we had to because there's, there was windows coming from the 89 building. There was all kinds of things that were happening on it we had, that we had to maintain. And so we built, we built around the courtyard. And what you're seeing here is the glass walls in the back are the, is the fenestration for the library area. So the library is going to be able to see out into this courtyard, right there. And then this view is from the interior of the multipurpose of the lunchroom, looking back out to the east and out to the fields. This is a view of the, of the new gym. You know, the gym, both of the gyms, there was a lot of discussion at the EIT meetings about, especially because this school is about, you know, there's so much music that happens in, in the school. And to be able to perform for the entire community, up to, you know, 600 or 700 people, we have placed in the drawings bleachers that will assemble the entire school in one of those rooms fairly comfortably, but it's a big set of bleachers. It's a big set, and that's in the new gym that that will happen. So, so I think that that's an important aspect, and to, for all the musical events, we've placed some storage on, on the south, on the south wall there, so that you can hold the musical bleachers and things like that that are going to be able to set you up for these music events. And we've also set the floor plan up so that the kids can, can roll some of their equipment and things down the hallway to set up these events and then bring them immediately back without going outside. So let's go to the next slide. This is a, this is a view of, of coming in the building and looking again out to the multipurpose room. Those are the tables we've set up, and that's, that's the old elevation or, or wall of the 54 building on the left. And the, it's a curved wall on the right-hand side that will look out in, into the new courtyard. So we can go to the next. This view being from the courtyard. And then we get into this plan, it looks pretty small. I think, if you wouldn't, there you go. Thanks. If you wouldn't mind, I think I'll come up to, you guys can hear me.
Maybe you scratch one of the speakers.
I'll be able to do that?
Yeah. Yes, yeah.
So it's oriented north and south, and this is the new entry right here. And then this is the multipurpose that looks out to the fields. This is the old 51 through here. This is the 89 addition. This is the 89, what you call the new, the new gym, which is going to be the new gym, but the newest one is going to be called the main gym. And, and in the center is the courtyard, and then through here is the library. This is the SLP room, and then this is our musical wing right here, which, which is, it comes pretty much within the taller walls of the, of the old gym. We purposely looked at the floor plan to, like I said earlier, is to, is to keep the kids inside and walking through, so they have a circular route all the way through the building and go around and around, and I'm sure that that's going to be a little tiring too at times. But there's a set of stairs here, which is already in the 51, and then there's a set of stairs here and here in the 89, so we have good circulation for the kids going up and down. Now, the grade distribution, the eighth grade is going to remain on the first floor in these blue classrooms right through here. There's one seventh grade classroom that had to stay on the, stay on the first floor because of the limitations of square footage on the existing second floor, and that's right in here. Boys' and girls' rooms will be here, special ed will be here, and then you can see orchestra, band, choir, music. It's quite a setup, I think. If you could, let me see, we'll have to go to the next slide.
Yeah, I'll take one.
Okay, thank you. The second floor is a setup so that this is a, the blue is the seventh above here, and then the light page is, is for the sixth. And they pretty much fit all these classes in here, and I'm really proud of those architects for having done that, because it was, it was quite a challenge. They really worked hard at it. Let's go back down to the first floor, because I do want to visit a little bit on the administration side of the wing, which is in the, which is in the 54. This, this area right in here is set up for the kitchen, and the serving will be through here. You could, you know, I think I pointed that out where this is the corner. And the site is set up so that when your kitchen service people come over with food, they'll have a clear, unobstructed pathway into delivering their, their services. And then the entry here is set up so that the, for the security, so that they'll buzz people through here, and then these will be the main security doors, and then all of the staff will be back in these areas. And then, of course, we have the courtyard in the middle. I should ask if you have any questions right now, but there's probably too many. It's a, it's a pretty wonderful plan, and I think that it's a very tight site for this size of school. And like I said, the, this building, you know, it's got the old glass block, and it's got some single-pane windows, and we're struggling with budget on that. But this building is like rock solid. This building's an excellent building, it's got some great window wells, you know, it's, they're, they're, they're pretty nice classrooms, and we're trying to maintain it. So let's go back up to the second floor, because I think another thing is the library was located in these three positions. This was the, this was the library wall. Now, this summer, we are going to come in and we're going to construct this wall right off the bat. This, this being the library, so there's one, two, three classrooms there. And so when we move the library downstairs, we are able to gain that space upstairs. I'll come back over here. Construction phasing is going to be, we've, we've determined a plan on construction phasing. I did not bring that plan with me tonight because it's still, I'd still say it's still a work in progress. But for the summertime activities, one of the problems was where we're constructing the new gym, there was a sewer main. That sewer main has to be rerouted, and I guess I didn't say that when I was talking about the site. But we also want to construct the water line this summer. We're going to instruct that, we're going to construct the, the one wall in the library, and we're going to do whatever else we can do to move the actual, our actual finish of construction documents will happen in August, so we'll want to get back on the agenda to come in and move the plan forward with the school district. And then Swank Construction will be bidding that out for subcontracts. And so that's, the first year will be, from September through, will be the new gym and the library in the middle. And then that should be done by next March. And then the following summer, that existing boiler room that's there, the steam boiler, will be cut out, all the piping will be cut out of the crawl spaces, and that will be replaced with new piping. And I think during that summer too is when the administration area will be converted. So it's, I'll say once again, it's quite a project, it's, it's quite complicated, and I think we're moving through it nicely. We're having very good cooperation with all our consultants, and especially, I think we have good working relationship with your, with your, with Burley and his team. So with that, I'll answer any questions. Thank you, Mark.
Any questions? CTA?
I certainly like the way it looks, and it seems that, it's nice to hear that we have some good bones to work with. I didn't see as much in the way of, like, what we've been talking about in some, a lot of the other schools with breakout spaces and stuff. Is that because of the limitations of the school, or am I thinking too much on a elementary school level, or? Go ahead.
Well, breakout spaces had been designed into it, but, but money pulled some of those spaces back out. Really, the budget is very tight. A lot of this budget is going into infrastructure. And so we, we had to get, we had to get very creative and, you know, that was a, those were meetings with the EIT, and some of the, like, just in this last meeting about three weeks ago, one of those breakout spaces that we had designed in there, they, the teachers just didn't feel like they would have had enough control over the kids. You know, it is a middle school. So, I don't know, Julie, maybe you could fill in.
I will say that there's been a lot of discussion with the advantage of having a common area now for the cafeteria that will only be used to serve food, both at breakfast and lunch, that there are lots of plans afloat of how to maximize that space and use that as a learning space. There's also the curved hallway that comes from the main entrance, and you see the cafeteria on the left, and then you go down to the library. We've talked about doing, there's, there's little nooks in that that can work for breakout spaces, display spaces, a technology counter where kids can have access to machines and do some group work in those areas. We've also had significant conversation on the EIT team meeting about how to maximize the library space and use it differently than it's currently being used in its existing location. So there's also been a lot of conversation about using the courtyard. Now it's going to be protected in a really nice learning space to break out into the courtyard as a learning space as well. A lot of conversation with that, with Science and Project Lead the Way and those type of courses, for sure.
Thanks. I just sort of need to be reminded, it's so difficult to keep all the different projects straight, but are we increasing capacity at Washington via the, via this construction?
There will be a slight increase. Washington's already approaching a large size of about 690 students. We designed, thinking 700 to 750 max capacity. Normally, what we would look at is eight classrooms per grade level. If we maximize those at 30 students per class, you're looking at 240 students at each grade level, so 720-ish. You may have some center-based programs that would drive that number a little bit higher. I would also just remind the trustees that on the elementary K8 side, this is, I believe, the largest budget of any of our construction projects at present. So if you put that in terms of what we've done at Franklin and Lowell, this is really an extensive project. And again, as we've seen with some of our older facilities, the infrastructure work really consumes a fair amount of that budget.
I've been looking at the site plan. Mike reminded me that if you look at the concrete, it's sort of set up like a piano key, I mean, he said, there's an allusion to piano keys there. So I wanted to bring that up.
Any other questions?
Yes, Burley.
I just want to add real quick, a little bit with the phasing. This phasing that we've decided on is, is going to be through three summers, so we'd actually finish this project in, in the summer of 19. And what that allowed us to do was keep all the kids at Washington. There was no need to relocate kids to Jefferson or anywhere else. So it was, it was definitely a win-win where we could kind of spread that out a little bit. And, you know, we looked at the financial costs, and there really wasn't anything that would be of, of large consideration to make us speed that process up. So we felt like that was the best plan to do, keep those kids in that school without the, without the interruption. So it will be, it will be phased out a little longer than what we see typically in some of our projects, but we feel like it was the best interest of the district to do it that way and the students and staff.
During the, during the phasing, we have to, we have to utilize the modular that's there. In order to do it, the modular right now is parked right here, right where this, right. So we're going to move the modular, and it's going to be up in the grassy area to leave the parking lot that's there. It's going to be located in this corner for the duration until we can transfer those children back into their learning, you know, their learning units inside the building. So that's where the modular will be sitting, right here. That's the last part that's going to be done, so. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for taking time to come tonight. It looks pretty exciting and well-thought-through.
Appreciate it.
And, really, we're on to Willard.
All right, and for Willard, we have CTA Architects, and we have Tony Houts and Jackie Bull here tonight. And thanks, Hatton, for pulling that up. Tony?
Excellent. Well, thank you, everyone, for letting us share the journey that has been Willard so far over the past few months. I'm Tony Houts with CTA, and I'm project manager, and in the back there is Jackie Bull, she's the principal architect for the project. And we just want to have, give you a short tour of where we've been and how we've gotten to where we've gotten, and kind of some of the surprises that are in store for Willard that we think are going to be very beneficial for this school as it moves forward. If you can go to the next slide, next slide.
Do you?
I do, so I can do this myself?
Yeah.
Maybe?
Is there a little light on? If not, I'd be happy to advance.
There we go. I like to share this at the beginning of when we're kind of introducing people to the project, just because early on with the EIT, we went over a lot of different things. And I just want to shout out a little bit to Principal Richland's team that he assembled. It has been a dynamic team, it is very socially diverse, and they are programmatically unified, which is really an interesting thing to take part of as an architect, because a lot of times what we have to do is we have to supply a lot of vision and things like that, and the great thing was that the group brought a lot of that vision to us. And their spirit, their love for their school, their energy, and their focus on the space and what it means to the students is really primary to them, rather than what am I going to have in my classroom. And so, it's been really beneficial, it's been a very rewarding experience working with that group throughout the process. And what we did early is we kind of went through and talked about a lot of different things that were important to them about Willard. We talked to the students, we talked to the staff, we talked to the EIT, and this diagram right here basically outlines what those are. So, there were certain critical elements that had to take place within the spaces. The spaces had to be relational, they had to be personable, they had to be celebratory. These are things that are important for these students at the high school. The building itself needed to be safe, it needed to be healthy, it needed to be connected to the environment, and it needed to reflect sustainable technology. And then the ethos, the attitude that we wanted to form within the building was that the building would be consistently flexible, both programmatically and spatially, that it would be innovative and allow for innovation within its walls, and that it would continue to be engaged with the community. So, every decision that we made following the institution of these principles was always pushed back to these to see if they reinforced what we were trying to accomplish with the school. All right, well, this is the original site plan, this is how it is now, and I wanted to share this just because our constraints on this site are super-tight. The yellow box right there is the existing Willard School. The orange outlines are essentially the property that Willard has to work in. We knew that we wanted to keep Willard open throughout the construction period, which forces us to construct the building away from that yellow box. We also knew from our guiding principles that the green space was critically important, and that we wanted to protect as much of that as we could. If you look closely, there's a blue line that kind of runs through the southern triangle there, that's a water main. So, in efforts to conserve fiscal funds, or, you know, conserve funds and be responsible with that, we wanted to make sure we didn't have to move that if we didn't have to. So, we kind of went through all of those iterations of different possibilities of where the building could be sited. And we're going to be looking at placing the building in the northwest corner on the existing parking lot, leaving the school in session. And then, following the school year, we'll pull down the old building and put the parking lot in its place. So, this is a look at the site plan, and I don't know if I can, I can't zoom in on this, can I? Okay. So, this is a look at how the site plan lays out. You can see that we're leaving the green space largely intact, we're encroaching a little bit with the new parking lot that's on the east. But the building situates itself tight into the left corner, northwest corner. It has openings facing Sixth Street, and it has the main entry facing to the east. So, all the parking will enter in the northeast corner, access the building from the east side through the secure entry. And then, I'll walk you through the floor plan when we get into the inside, but there's some, the way that we wanted to organize the building was to organize it in a way that kept those personable, social spaces intact and allowed for lots of different interactions between different groups of students. So, rather than having one large common space in this building, we broke it into four different ones and tried to orient different programs around those types of buildings. All the site program, we've, we were showing a new basketball court at the south end of the parking lot right there. We're showing an outdoor learning garden, outdoor classroom just south of the main facility. There's a courtyard, and then to the west is where we're proposing to enhance the bus drop-off a little bit from how it happens right now. So, this is a look at the floor plan. You enter, which is kind of on the bottom right there, this is looking down, but you enter into the entry, which is the secure entry. Administration wing is to the bottom part of the plan there. And then, you can enter into what we call the foyer. So, we've organized this into four spaces like I mentioned before. To the right of the foyer is the family room that we're calling, which has a great learning stair that doubles as a bleacher that looks into the multipurpose space. So, we're trying to create different ways to use all the different spaces as many different ways as we possibly can. So, the multipurpose space has a large operable door on the one side that faces that large learning stair. Students tend to hang out on the stairs now already in the existing facility, so we wanted to make sure that we utilize that opportunity for that space, for them to socialize, do homework, things like that, on that stair within the school itself. So, there's a pathway stair on the left side of that, and then there's a larger stair where students can sit and work. The operable door can raise up, and they can have view into the multipurpose room if there's a larger event going on in there. The elevator core is in the center, and if you circle around that, the dining room is on the backside of it, and what we're calling the living room is on the south side. So, you can kind of get the feel for how we've organized that, is that administration is near the foyer and the living room, we have the activity areas, we have the culinary kitchen in the center of the building, all around the family room, and then joining the dining room. So, we've tried to organize all of this so that the students can find different places to inhabit, different places to socialize, different places to do different things. If you've been through Willard, it's amazing, because there's so much different art and personal expression in the building. We wanted to maintain that feel in this building as well. They like to play music, play guitar, so we've put small learning rooms underneath that learning stair, so a student could go in and play guitar, or they can work solely on what they're doing individually if they wish to, but it just gives them that opportunity to interact with their environment in different ways. One feature that is not shown in this drawing right here is that we're looking to take some of the brick of existing Willard School and put it in the center of this building, so that we will construct it so that it's ready to receive that, and when the school comes down, we want to make sure that part of that Willard School comes into this structure as well. We're also going to move the sign over, and there's been discussion about potentially, there's a time capsule in that, and there's been discussion about potentially having another time capsule added to that when the new facility opens up. This is the second floor, so as you work your way up the learning stair, it's open to daylight on the north side, and then it's open to the library. Now, the library has become an interesting piece of program, and I'm pretty excited about it, because it's open to the learning stair, and as you access the second floor, it's right in front of you, but it also contains the maker space, the technological maker space inside of it, and it's adjacent to the computer lab, the media center. So, what we're trying to do, again, is trying to utilize these spaces. Right now, library is in there for a couple periods a day, and the rest of the time, it's unoccupied, so if there's ways for us to encourage students to use these spaces, encourage faculty to use these spaces, then as the school and the educational pedagogy begins to develop and change, then that space is available for that. So, there's lots of different programs and activities and learning opportunities that can happen within that expanded library maker space and media center space. All the rest of the areas up on that second floor primarily are classrooms. So, what we wanted to do is we wanted to create something that was socially diverse, that was programmatically unified, and allowed for lots of different interactions. That's the fun part for me as an architect, is to see how people use the space and what happens in the spaces, and the energy that happens in there and how they make it their own. So, as we go outside, we've got a little video that we'll just let run, and I'll try and talk over it, hopefully I don't have to talk too fast. Will that play? So, this is how it'll be staged right here, Willard's right there, the yellow box, the new construction will go to the northwest corner on the parking lot, and then we'll pull that structure down and replace it with the parking lot. You can see the large green space to the south, we're trying to preserve as much of that as possible, and we'll continue to discuss that and work through that green space area as the project develops. One thing we wanted to make sure of early on was there was the possibility to go to a three-story structure, the one right now is two and a half stories and essentially high, because the lower level is partly below ground. We wanted it to fit into the neighborhood, we didn't want it to be too tall, so we've fought to keep it to two stories. As you're coming down the one-way across the railroad tracks, you can kind of see how the building starts to take shape on the right, and it's got a little bit more of a residential feel on the west side. And as you come and approach, this is the view that would come from Sixth. Into that north, daylighting space, into the family room. The parking lot, the neighborhood nearby. And then, we're coming up here on what is the outdoor learning classroom, the south courtyard. And you can see how it addresses the neighborhood. We were planning to put the trash receptacle on the west face there, just off the kitchen. There's the enhanced bus stop area, and as we spin around, you'll see what we've kind of done for the entry, we've tried to create a decorative entry element that shelters from the weather, but kind of has that Willard feel to it. And then, this is what we're looking for, the primary entry elevation. Schedule-wise, we're looking to break ground in August, and if everything goes smoothly, we'll be in next August, ready to go. With that, I'll open it to questions.
Any questions? I have a question.
Yes.
Has there been any discussion yet whether the elevator in the current Willard School can move to the new school or be repurposed for a different building in the district or not? It's just it was an expensive addition to the building when it was placed.
Good question, we have not discussed that, but we certainly can look at that as an opportunity for, there are a few salvage opportunities within Willard. Right now, there's photovoltaic cells that are over there right now, solar panels that we are going to repurpose. The engineers have already reviewed that to see if those are feasible to reuse, so we're going to pull those over and put them on the roof at Willard for learning opportunity. But the elevator would certainly be another one that would be worth looking at, absolutely.
Burley and I are trying to decide who wants to talk about the elevator. We've had some conversation about the elevator. One of the challenges with the Willard project specifically is we'll continue to use the old building until the new building is done, so we can't repurpose it for the Willard project because of the timing. However, there are elements, particularly the car and the rails, that we will look at and see if we can repurpose in one of our other facilities. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, you answered exactly right. The other repurpose of that project we're looking, we're going to look into is, and I think it's going to work, my plumbers are taking a look at it now, but the central kitchen boiler is failing, and that boiler is only about five or six years old, so, the Willard boiler. So, we would like, we were looking, going to look at relocating that boiler over to the central kitchen, replace that one. So, it's going to be a good alternate to a brand-new one.
It was great to hear about so many of the kind of touchy-feely aspects of the process and putting this together, I really appreciate that a lot, thank you. And one of the principles was about the building itself being healthy and using sustainable practices, and you didn't touch on that too much, so I just was wondering if you could speak to that a little bit?
Yes, absolutely. So, part of that's budget-related, but what we do want to make sure, we do have the photovoltaic cells that we can access already. We're going to make sure that we're going to use the energy-efficient systems as possible, but really maximize daylighting and daylight harvesting. So, the way that we've organized that plan with the four main rooms that everything's organized around, all four of those rooms have access to daylight in the core of the building, so, and all the classrooms have access to daylight. So, the only one that's really in the center of the building is the dining room area, and that has a skylight directly above it. So, what we're trying to do is make sure that all of those spaces in that building have access to direct daylight, which obviously impacts electricity. And then, we'll be looking at envelope technologies for insulation values and things like that as well, so.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
Thank you very much for being here, and thanks for your team for being here. And now, we'll move on to two, which is to award bids for student and staff device replacements. And so, Hatton, I don't know if it's you or Russ, or you and Russ, who will be explaining this topic, but the recommendation is that the trustees approve the award of the contract for the purchase of staff and student Chromebooks to Information Technology Corp.
Yes, I am going to let Russ describe the specifics on this particular request.
Thank you. So, this goes back to the original device request, as you saw in the packet. Our vendor that won the bid actually notified us, unfortunately, after we placed the order that they couldn't honor their pricing. It went up $25, which put them above ITC's quote. So, we reached out to ITC to see if they would still honor their quote, and they would. So, essentially, we're asking for permission to go to the second lowest bidder, which is now the lowest bidder.
Any questions for Russ? So, what I hear you saying is the initial bid that went in for first-call computers, they realized they made a mistake, and they had bid the package in a way that, once they took a look at it, they were going to have to, in order to honor it, it was going to be more expensive.
Yeah, they basically told me after the fact that they bid it based on getting all the devices, even though it specifically said in the RFP process that each one would be bid separately, so it was an oversight on their part, and they would not honor their bid, which Pat and I have had several discussions about this since that time to try to avoid this possibility of happening in the future. It's, I'll be honest, it's pretty disappointing to, you know, this late in the game, and luckily, the second bidder, ITC, who won the other portion of the bid, was able to come back with a very close price, so it didn't affect us too much other than timeframe.
Any other questions for Russ? We'll see, no other questions. Is there a motion to approve the award of the contract for the purchase of the staff and student Chromebooks to Information Technology Corp. Moved by Trustee Decker and seconded by Trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Smith?
Thanks for taking care of this, Russ. I too, I guess I'm kind of disappointed with the outcome. I guess this is more of a question I probably should have asked before, but is this, is the difference in the money, does this affect anything down the road? Is this going to be a, the tip of the iceberg type of thing?
We look at it from, you know, when we do all bid processes, is to evaluate the vendor and their previous responses, and this will affect future bids from that company. But I don't think it's an indication of the industry at all. In fact, ITC ironically had an issue where HP didn't honor, they pulled some aggressive pricing that they offered, and my conversations with them, you know, I explained this, we need you to honor the bid, and they said, "We will." So, they're just going to swallow the price, which I think is what a vendor should do if they bid and have some internal issues to deal with.
Any other board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, then we have a motion on the table, and all those in favor of approving the award of the contract for the purchase of staff and student Chromebooks to Information Technology Corp, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Then, we move on to approve the amendment to the Wide Open Network Wide Area Network Fiber and Wireless Contract, and I think we heard about it at an earlier meeting, and the recommendation is that we authorize the modification to the agreement with WON in the manner outlined in the agenda, and so, is that Pat or is that Russ?
Russ is ready to roll.
So, this is in addition to the one that we discussed in Sealy Lake. It's actually a separate project, however, with the company, Wide Open Networks, that's in town doing our fiber project, it was more cost-effective to go with that company because their equipment's in town. So, this is actually not necessarily a fiber project, but simply digging conduit between this building and the Missoula College location. But by putting it into this contract, it falls under the same terms, which is a benefit to the district.
Any questions for Russ? So, just, who's going to run the fiber through then?
More than likely, we'll reach out to one of our other vendors, possibly WeConnect, who did two Sentinel, or we'll look at some other ones as well.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion to authorize the modification to the agreement with Wide Open Network in the manner outlined in this agenda item, which is essentially to allow them to provide services, materials, and labor to put in conduits from this building over to Missoula College. Moved by Trustee Breakstead and seconded by Trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Moved by trustee Breakstead and seconded by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Seems very efficient since they're in town anyway, with equipment anyway. So I'll, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to authorize the modification to the agreement with Wide Open Network, um as has been described, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Thanks.
Thank you.
No, I think we let Russ sit down and Burley comes back to the podium. So this is to award the bid for IP telephone system upgrades. And the recommendation is that the trustees award Rocky Mountain Solutions with the IP phone equipment upgrade at Franklin Elementary, Lowell Elementary, Rattlesnake Elementary, the administration building, and the business building, the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety cents, subject to successful negotiations of a contract. So do you, you want to walk us through um basically what this proposal is attempting to do?
Yeah, so we uh um solicited the NJPA co-op to um, to Mitel dealers. And we, as when we had this proposed, um, to use NJPA, we discussed the, the advantage to using a Mitel system. That's a system we currently use. It's, it's old and outlived its life. And through the transition of the bond process and over a two or three year period, the district felt it necessary to, to keep a Mitel system, um, uh, given that we would be operating two systems at once. And operating a Mitel to a Mitel made a lot more sense than a Mitel to a competitor. So it just made it uh, uh easier, easier process. And then there was also a cost savings involved in that as well, because we already had some of the equipment necessary to run that system. Um, we solicited bids and we had two responses. Um, I believe we, we invited ten, uh, ten Mitel dealers to respond. Uh, we had two responses and we selected uh Rocky Mountain Solutions, which is out of uh Ronan. They've uh did some workforce in the past and we're excited to work with them.
Any questions for Burley? Trustee Smith?
Usually we see like all the bids, and I know it's only two. How, I guess, how far apart were they?
Six hundred dollars.
Whoa, really?
Yes. And, and when we do these uh, when we solicit bids, we, we do a scoring mechanism. So it's, it's typically in the thirty, forty, fifty percent range for pricing. And then we, we solicit other, other information such as warranty, customer service, uh references. So we solicit some other stuff that we score.
Yeah, I guess if it's that close, that those things are pretty important.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions for Burley? Seeing none, then is there a motion to award to Rocky Mountain Solutions the contract with IP phone equipment upgrades at Franklin Lowell, Rattlesnake Administration Building and Business Building in the amount that was stated, one twenty-six, six ninety-six, ninety, subject to successful negotiations of a contract? Is there such a motion moved by trustee Smith? Is there seconded, seconded by trustee Newbold? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of awarding the um, awarding the opportunity for Rocky Mountain Solutions to provide the IP phone equipment upgrades at the schools and buildings identified, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous. Now we move on to approve the award of contract for Stegner track improvements. And it looks like it's Pat and Burley? Is it mostly Burley, Pat and Burley?
You know, I'll just maybe talk about it briefly um from the funding standpoint. And uh, um, this is a, an exciting project. If any of you have visited Stegner Track recently, you'll know it's in pretty rough shape. And this is a track used by, by our high schools for practice, primarily Sentinel and Hellgate, and then used by our middle schools for, for meets and, and whatnot. Um, the uh, um, the funding for the track improvement um is two-pronged. One is through the elementary, through the use of some rental proceeds that we have accumulated um from the Mount Jumbo and Prescott leases. Um, and then the other portion is, is through the uh permissive levy that was authorized through Senate Bill three oh seven this past legislative session. And, and that resolution that was adopted by the board reflects an estimate of that dollar amount that will be finally adopted by the board in August. Um, so uh, we received a, a couple of, of bids and, and are recommending the award to Field Turf for the, for the, for the track replacement at, at Stegner. And like Burley had mentioned with the uh, with the uh submittals for the IP telephone, the, the scoring was based upon price plus other factors, including warranty and, and uh ability to perform in the timeframe requested and that type of thing. So um, they were the highest scoring and recommended for selection. Burley, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'll add that we had, we, the way we set this bid up was um, we had a couple different alternates involved. So we were looking at ten lane tracks, eight lane tracks, and we had concrete borders. Concrete borders will help expand the life of the, of the track based off of the, the concrete has really less places to go because you have concrete borders on each side to kind of hold them in. Um, or curbing, for lack of a better term. But um, and so we, we did it with and without the curbing and ten lanes to eight lanes. Um, working with the track coach and the athletic directors, we've um came to conclusion that eight lane was completely sufficient for the, for Stegner. And so the project's gonna, gonna be an eight lane track with concrete curbing on each side. And then we also had another alternate, which was to redo all the runways for um pole vault, long jump, triple jump, that kind of stuff. And those were also selected as those have, those may even be in worse shape than the track itself. So uh, we feel like we've done, um, we've got a pretty good deal here to really improve that facility dramatically. So.
Any questions for Burley or Pat? Trustee Kendall?
Burley, can you tell us um some background on Field Turf, the company? I had um talked to Superintendent Thane and Chair Holland about this, and I don't know if there was a circle made. But I just happened to stumble on some information about how they had gotten into some litigation in the past. And I just wondered if you know anything about that? Did that come up in the course of the bid?
You know, it didn't, although it's the same company that, that did the stadium. And so I know a little bit about it, but probably not enough to uh, to be dangerous. Is that the opposite? But um, I, what I, what I do know is uh, like with the turf we had out at, at the stadium, it's a, it's a field turf product. And the litigations and the, and some of the, so uh, the core cases was Field Turf bought that turf from a different company. And that was, there was like a hundred and forty, that's if we're talking about the same thing. There was like a hundred and forty schools or universities or whatever had that product. And, and it became kind of a three-way who's responsible, or two-way who's responsible. Um, but we, so that's how I kind of know a little bit about it from, from this, from the stadium is that we got a Field Turf product. Um, and the track is actually, actually done by a partner, a sister company, if you will, which is Bynon. And so Bynon's gonna be doing this, this track as well. So it's under Field Turf, under the co-op, the Missoula, Montana Cooperative Services. But Bynon is a, is a sister company. So they're, they're actually the ones gonna be doing the um, under, under Field Turf's supervision and project management. So um, but that's kind of what I know about it. Um, like I said, not a whole lot, but uh, just from what we've, what I've read as well when we did the stadium, that because we didn't get that, that product, that we were assured. And then we also checked a lot of references, particularly in the Montana area. And they were very happy with their products, um, which is, was another reason we, we went with them.
Sure. Are there, how many other places in Montana are there? Do you know? Are there more than a handful that have this product?
Yeah, there are. So we have um, I'm gonna probably butcher it a little bit, but there, there's a, there's a couple, there's a couple. Um, Laurel was a big reference for us because it was a very similar system of what we were putting in. There's many different systems for fields. Um, the University of Montana also had Field Turf. Um, and then I believe one of the billing schools has it too. But um, and I think there's a um, there's, there's a couple more out there. And I'd be happy to provide those for you and get those for you. But there was, there, there was a Field Turf, Future out there. And I believe they're even looking at doing another university in Montana too. So um this summer. But uh, the references came very well, very well.
And just for clarification, the Stegner project will not involve any turf. Uh, we're talking just about the running track. So uh, as was my understanding, again, it's just a quick cursory review. It's a question about warranty on a specific turf product that was manufactured by a third-party vendor. And that does not come into play with regard to this project as it's contemplated.
Any, oh, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, this is maybe a question for Pat, um, just about the funding um piece. And um, you had said that the high school portion is gonna be funded by the permissive levy that was authorized by SB three oh seven. Can you say just a little bit about what the intent of SB three oh seven was? Like what kind of um legislation that was?
Sure. So, so the uh, um, this involved a lot of the discussion, a lot of discussion that the legislature had about uh providing support for facilities around the state and for school districts addressing uh facilities, um, for addressing ongoing maintenance projects that they've been unable to fund. And uh, and I guess sort of in, in line with um a pushout approach where, where the, the uh local communities are, are funding rather than the state, much of the, the upgrades and the improvements. This was the, the background behind this. Um, going forward, um, they have identified some funding where the state would kick in a portion to match, sort of a, a matching piece. So um, one of the, the, the pieces to the legislation was, was on um, was really addressing deferred maintenance and maintenance type issues, which I certainly um identify this as, as falling in that category. Um, and uh, for us, it would certainly also apply to non-bond funded projects, which is, is what the, the struggle was with Stegner is, is finding resources to pull together to, to help fix that, that facility. Does that help?
Any other questions for Pat or Burley? Oh, sorry, trustees.
Yeah, well, one point I just want to make for everybody watching. I know there's a lot of people that, just to clarify, the Stegner is the field right behind us over here. Um, and Pat or, or Burley or whoever, this being um both secondary and elementary, um, did you, did you look at uh, how did you come up with the ratio, I guess? Or was it fiscally directed or was it use directed?
Yeah, we tried to do it use directed. So when we uh met with the um ADs and, and some of the track coaches really early on, talking about uh, uh facilities and, and conditions and use and that sort of thing, um, it was clear that a significant amount of time of this facility is used by our, our elementary district and also by the, by the community. And um, and, and so um, as you guys know, we have a number of facilities that are shared elementary and high school um in terms of their maintenance and business building, the administrative building. Um, we share costs uh and, and split costs for maintenance between the elementary and the high school. Um, we talked with our auditors about, about this project and its reference in the background is the, um, it's not property owned by the elementary district. It's owned by the high school, uh, much like Willard was owned by the elementary and used by the high school. Um, but we'll capitalize the improvement in both districts and essentially have um it function under, you know, uh, under a, a use agreement type of arrangement. Um, and I, I don't think it necessarily requires the formality of that, but it's certainly an investment that, that would um, would, would require us to capitalize it on the elementary side to that extent. And then also expect that, that use for that community.
Any questions? Yeah.
Just, I guess, one more question about the funding piece. Was this um, was this project contemplated to be included with our bond projects at any point?
No, and I, I, I think that um, it was not. And, and uh, you know, looking back and, and um, I, I, I think uh, we were running up against the, the, sort of the cap or the limits that we were talking about so quickly. And we already had an athletic facility on the docket. So it was, it was, it was pulled off. It may have been brought up, but it was pulled off.
Any other questions for Pat or Burley? So um, no further questions. Then is there a motion that the trustees award Field Turf USA Incorporated with the track replacement project at Stegner, subject to successful negotiations of contract? Any motion? Oh, moved by trustee Handel and seconded by trustee Wade, just because I saw them. First, um, any board comment? Trustee Smith?
I guess this is specific. I mean, I, I'm definitely a hundred percent behind this. Um, I just want to point out, this is just another example of, of the way that the districts and, and not just the districts, but the schools work together. I know Hellgate and Sentinel at very least um work hard to make use of all the different um amenities that the, that we have in the two districts. And I, I, I just want to commend um both the operation and maintenance people for figuring it out and Pat figuring out how it's all gonna work together monetarily. And to the, to the buildings themselves is just, it, I think it's a way to, to save money overall by, by using the things that we have more often. And uh, the, the problem with that is they wear out soon. We have to replace them quicker. But uh, I think this is a good project. Thanks.
Any other board discussion? I'll just add one thing. After trustee Kendall called me, I reviewed a number of the documents involved in the litigation. It all seemed to be focused on turf. All seemed to be focused on turf that was provided from a, a third-party source. There were, and it looks like there were several, a bit of a litigation about the turf, but I couldn't find anything that raised any concerns about um tracks or concrete work or anything like that. So I did check into it too. So any other board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, then um, all those in favor of awarding Field Turf USA with the track replacement contract at Stegner, subject to the successful negotiations of such a contract, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to six, which is an elementary action item. And the recommendation is that the trustees approve the budget amendment, resolution twenty seventeen dash thirteen E, in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the elementary transportation fund. And so Pat and Burley, I don't know who wants to perhaps speak to it?
I can. Um, so this is the, the final leg in the process for um making a, approving a budget amendment. Um, the first was the budget amendment, budget amendment proclamation, which is essentially an announcement of an intent to do a resolution uh to adopt a budget amendment. Um, the purpose here, and I'll, I'll maybe just mention it for both since they're the same, uh, that the next agenda item as well, is that um, as a result of, of some route requirements and leveling and special needs routes during the year, we've uh expended um, at this point, very close to the budgets that were adopted in August. Uh, fortunately, we have reserves. And so um, this is a um, really a safety net for us to do this budget amendment, to pull funds from reserves into the budget. Um, we'll have final expenditures through the end of this month and will be paid through July. So um, this is just to make sure that we expand within our, with our budget limits. So we're, we're raising that budget limit for the transportation fund. We're using reserves to the extent we don't need those funds to pay expenditures this year. We'll reappropriate for next year. So it'll all be expended for, for transportation purposes. Um, and so the, the resolution is on page thirty-five for the elementary. The, the amendment proposed is a hundred and sixty thousand. Um, and the facts are outlined within that resolution.
Any questions for Pat? Is there a motion from an elementary trustee that the trustees approve the budget amendment resolution twenty seventeen dash thirteen E in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, as is attached on page thirty-five? Moved by trustee Smith, seconded by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the budget amendment resolution twenty seventeen dash thirteen E in the stated amount for the elementary transportation fund, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to elementary trustees present. Then we move on to seven, which is basically the parallel twenty seventeen dash thirteen S. And the only difference is that it is in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the high school transportation Transportation Fund. But is there anything else to add, Pat, on this topic?
No, that's exactly right.
Okay. So any questions of Pat about this item? Seeing none. Is there a motion from a trustee that we approve the budget amendment Resolution 2017-13S in the amount of $30,000 for the High School Transportation Fund? Moved by trustee Waik and seconded by trustee, I'm gonna say Dugger?
Duggar.
Duggar, I done it. Okay, now it's stuck in my brain, okay. I apologize, Elliot. And so any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of approving the budget amendment Resolution 2017-13S in the amount of $30,000 for the High School Transportation Fund, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to item number eight, which is an information agenda item, and it's about the Missoula College IDIQ, yet another educational acronym, which stands for indefinite delivery, indefinite quality list of providers.
Thank you. This is brought forth as an information item in an effort just simply to be transparent with the board. As you know, we have previously put out requests for qualifications for professional service providers, and we have developed a list of those providers who responded and were vetted. We label it IDIQ, as Chair Holland indicated, indefinite quantity, indefinite delivery. So the intent is that we can call upon those professional service providers to undertake projects for us as they may arise, generally projects that are a little bit smaller in scope than the major facility construction projects that we're engaged with. As you also know, and for the benefit of the general public, the buildings that are located directly to the south and the east of where we're sitting right now, the former Missoula College site, were actually built by the high school district and served the vocational education program for the high school district. When those vocational programs transitioned to the university system, it became the Colleges of Technology, we sold that property to the university system for $10. Included in that sale was also what's known as the West Campus, where many of the heavy equipment-type classes are located for Missoula College. There was originally a provision in that contract that said if they vacated the property within a given timeframe, it would revert back to Missoula County Public Schools under the same conditions. That timeframe long ago expired, but in the interest of fairness, the Board of Regents has seen fit to approve a transfer of that property back to Missoula County Public Schools, again, for the same interest, $10. And that was approved by the Board of Regents previously. We are in the process, then, of wanting to have an architect from our IDIQ list, and CTA architects would be the one that comes up in this case. Take a look at the infrastructure in the building, the roof, the mechanical systems, the technology, security, all need to be evaluated. So we'll begin that work. We also will work to determine what updating and potential renovations are required for us to inhabit the facility. And as was reported earlier, we've made a determination that the Washington Middle School students will stay on their site throughout the construction project. Originally, we had conceived that Missoula College site might be one of the swing spaces we would evaluate. So given that, we're prepared now to begin assessing the Missoula College facilities for an opportunity for the business building functions, the administrative building functions, fine arts, central library, Indian education, et cetera, to all be unified in a single campus in the former Missoula College location. So we wanted to inform the board and the community that we're looking to move forward and provide you an opportunity to provide comment with regard to that plan.
Trustee Kendall?
Does this include both the evaluation and the work, or just the evaluation?
At this point, we're evaluating, we'll get into some design development later on, but it does not yet contemplate any construction.
Okay. Any other questions? Trustee Decker?
Did you actually get to, like, go give them $10?
No, but I'm sure Pat will be good for his $10. I might also mention that there is a fair amount of furnishing and equipment that we'll inherit along with the facility. So we have done a walkthrough, looked at some of that equipment and how we'll repurpose some of that. There are a number of modular buildings on the site, and the university is hoping to sell some of them to generate enough proceeds to move the two new green buildings that are located on the east side of the property out to their west campus. So there's still a little work to be done, and the official transition date will be July 1st.
Any other questions? I just have one. Is there a cap in terms of how much you would spend on services? Or how do you determine how much you give CTA to do this?
We'll have to do some initial evaluation to determine a scope and then negotiate a contract.
Okay. And so would that contract come back to the board, or is it under a certain dollar amount? We don't need to see it again?
It will be beneath the bid limits, is our initial impression.
That's, and if for any reason it was above the bid?
Then it would come back to the board.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? This is information only, but any public comment?
Dave Severson, MEAMFT, I can't resist. I guess I'm really old because I was in this very room when the building was sold to the university, and now it's come full circle back. I'm very pleased for the district.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. Then we move on to B1, which is the personnel report. And this is the routine personnel report that, for the, whoops. It's for the month of June?
Correct.
Okay, it just didn't say in the little X on it, right. So this is the routine personnel report for the month of June that we see on a monthly basis, and the recommendation is that we approve the items on the provided personnel report. Is there anything of note?
No, it's a much more typical report from the last month.
Okay. Any questions for Dave? Seeing no questions. Is there a motion to approve the items on the provided personnel report? Moved by trustee Waik, seconded by trustee Smith. Because it is the personnel report, we, as a board, don't talk about any specific individuals on the report, just general comments, if anyone has any general comments on the personnel report, and the same would be true as to public comment. Any board comments? Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all those in favor of approving items on the provided personnel report for the month of June 2017, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to everyone trustees present. Then we move on to number two, which is a request for an exception to Board Policy 3110, which involves entrance placement and transfer, and three students who will exceed the age limit for registration prior to completing their required credits for graduation are seeking an exception, and they're, we identify them by initials only, LCCN and MM. And basically, Karen, do you want to, this just means they're probably gonna be 20 by the time they're going into their senior year?
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Just to remind us, Montana law permits trustees to approve a waiver of the age limit for students who have reached 19 on or before September 19th in what, September 10th, sorry, in what is called exceptional circumstances. And we believe exceptional circumstances exist here, and the administration is recommending a waiver for these three students.
Any questions for Karen? Trustee Smith?
So just to be clear, Karen, this allows us to complete their education?
It allows us to allow them to complete their education.
To earn their well-hard work for, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to grant a waiver of age limitations for the students identified by initials in the agenda? Moved by trustee Dugger? Duggar? I'll get this straight. And is there a second? Seconded by trustee Newbold. Any discussion? Other than, thank you for identifying folks that need some additional support from us, even though that the state doesn't provide for that same support. Any, go ahead, trustee?
No, just to add to your comment, it's worth noting that the last two legislative sessions, we've tried to get this raised to the national standard. And Montana is one of the only two states to have anything below 21, and a lot of states go to 22, so we really need to catch up in that area.
I just want to echo that sentiment. I think it should be to the 22nd birthday.
And just so I'm remembering, we've got a second in motion and board comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of granting a waiver of age limitations for the three students identified by initials in the agenda, please indicate approval by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Now we come on to number eight, which is public comment. We make an opportunity to have public comment at both the beginning and the end of each board meeting, although typically the state law requires only one opportunity, but this is in case someone couldn't get here right at the beginning of the board meeting, there's the second opportunity. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Then thank you, everyone, for being here, and we're adjourned.